Good morning. It is May 6, 2025, 10:00 AM. And I hereby call the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors to order. And would invite you, if you would like, to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Thank you. I would entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Faisal?
Aye.
Haddens?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Agenda adopted. Next, we have public comment number one, and that's a comment period for the public to address topics on today's agenda. So if you want to address a topic, if you're in the room, you can please come to the table up here, or if you're on Zoom, you could raise your hand. We'll wait a second to see. Seeing none, I will close the public comment. And we will move to item six, which is consideration of proclamation recognizing May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month proclamation. And we'll read the proclamation. Whereas, according to the National Institute of Mental Health, mental health is a part of overall health, and one in five U.S. adults experiences a mental illness each year, and one in 20 experience serious mental illness each year. And whereas, one in six U.S. youth aged 6 to 17 experience a mental health disorder each year. And whereas, 50% of all lifetime mental illnesses begin by age 14, and 75% by age 24. And whereas, long delays often occur between initial appearance of systems and when individuals get help, which means early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental illness recovery.
And whereas, it's important to maintain mental health and learn the symptoms of mental illness in order to help when it is needed. And whereas, every citizen and community can make a difference in helping to end the silence and stigma that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. And public education and civic activities can encourage mental health and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as National Mental Health Awareness Month in Story County, and call upon our citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools to recommit our county to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness to promote recovery. I move the proclamation.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Faisal?
Aye.
Haddens?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Proclamation is adopted. And we have somebody here from NAMI. Roxanne, you wanted to come say a few words? And if you would just sit there and make sure your microphone is on and pull it close to you, if you would. Nope. No, turn your microphone on.
There you go.
All right, there we go. Good morning. I am Roxanne Peterson, the current president and CEO of NAMI Central Iowa Chapter. I'm here today to share with you in representation of May being Mental Health Awareness Month, that we have adopted it as well to call it our Deo Day. So not only is May Mental Health Awareness Month, but May 16th also happens to be the day that Richard Deo was born. And in addition to his birthday, May 16th is known as National Living in Peace Day. International Living in Peace Day urges people to live united and peaceful in a way listening to, respecting and appreciating others. We think that that's no coincidence. Richard showed us that a diagnosis doesn't have to define you or imprison you. His life and legacy showed that there are four important ingredients that overcome all, and that is love, compassion, understanding and support. You see, as much as Richard needed understanding, he also gave it to others in the same respect. Often many misunderstood his love, kindness, uniqueness, that brought most interactions with others. Richard had to show love, compassion, understanding to many who often misunderstood him. We all come from all walks of life and circumstances, and we all have a story that we carry and a story that's worth being shared. Richard's story isn't the only story. But Richard's story was written in a visual manner throughout Story County. He left small pieces of himself with many who touched his heart in many ways throughout Ames and Story County as a whole. The pieces he left behind are now memories that will forever be engraved in our hearts. And what a beautiful and invaluable gift to receive. Richard's legacy of being himself reminded us of how beautiful it is to just be your true and authentic self. He spread love and kindness by holding the door at the city hall, sharing his thoughts on posters, t-shirts and buttons. Richard had depth. There was so much more to Richard than his illness. So I want to thank all of you here on the Board of Supervisors Council and the entire Story County community for allowing us to be able to hold this day so sacred, but to also remember Richard Deo. So in honor of Richard, I want to challenge everyone to take his most controversial and misunderstood statement of "let us be naked" and reframe it with the mindset that the nakedness is a form of vulnerability, that we are stripped down and forced to be seen and accepted just as we are. So we invite the entire Story County community on May 16th, starting at 11:30, to come to NAMI Central Iowa at 424 Fifth Street, just to enjoy each other, community, but also to have some grilled hot dogs and chips and water, but also to learn more, a little bit more about what's called tardive dyskinesia, which is an involuntary movement throughout the body. And we can learn more on May 16th. So thank you very much.
What time?
Oh, 11:30. Starts from 11:30 to 2:00.
We have a proclamation. We'd like to have you take a picture taken with us, and then you can take the proclamation with you.
All right, thank you.
And next, we have a presentation from the Iowa Bicycle Coalition. Luke Hoffman? Okay. What were you planning? 5:10. Yeah.
Turn it.
Seven sounds good. You can do that.
Anything under an hour.
Don't listen to her. I'm cheering.
Listen to me.
Hour.
It's my allergies.
You're getting there, okay.
Well, I'll just go ahead and get started here in the interest of respecting your time. Well, I'm Luke Hoffman. I'm the executive director of the Iowa Bike Coalition. The study that we're presenting today has been presented to Story County Conservation. And I'll be presenting it to their board officially with the official county level results here in the coming days. But this is a statewide, it's a renewal of a statewide project that we did back in 2012. And it is, in 2012, it showed that there was 364.9 million was the total economic impact back in 2012, when we did the original study. And so that was the kind of backdrop to us coming to say now, more than 10 years later, we want to update those study results. And there was a tangible need for us to do that in talking with our partners who sponsored this at Iowa Economic Development Authority. Debbie Durham herself signed off on this in three business days when we made the request for $5,000, because there was such a need for all counties to come together and say, we need updated information on this, because every single application for Destination Iowa, for CAT grants, for state recreational trails, which I know this county definitely has a vested interest in, often cites those, that old 2012 study. And even up until two weeks before we produced the statewide renewal results, we were still seeing applications, or IEDA was seeing applications with that old study sourced in it. So there was a tangible need for us to do this. You can move forward on that slide. Thank you. Iowa Bike Coalition, our organization, we're a statewide nonprofit organization in our 21st year here, and we're dedicated to ensuring everybody has, you know, safe, accessible and enjoyable bike ride. We do that through education events, better policy and growing a community of supporters. Our vision is that Iowa is the best place to ride a bike in the country. So move forward there. I talked a little bit about why we did this. I'll just make a quick note. The original study that I mentioned in 2012 cost $4,000. It was a partnership with the University of Northern Iowa. Just want to say thank you to Story County Conservation for their sponsorship. Over seven counties sponsored this new study for $5,000. The total cost is now over $60,000. So it is leagues ahead of where that original study was. And that was by design, because we wanted to produce something not only that renewed the old numbers, but provided you a much more robust and personalized approach to this, because we feel that, again, the need is so great for funding. The funding landscape has shifted. And so this study was an opportunity for us to provide tools and resources for you as a county to better be positioned to secure funding that is very scarce right now. So this is kind of what that looked like. We did, you know, a primary survey in addition to getting federal source data. We had great results from Story County. And then part of that sponsorship, one of the benefits is that Story County, both the board or any other leader, can get access to the raw results. So we had over 2,700 responses for our primary source survey across the state from 94 counties. And Story County is one of the top counties, because I think y'all put that, Story County Conservation plugged that in like a newsletter. So we got tons of results. Happy to share that data with anybody, whether at the Board of Supervisors or at the county level, as well as just an added benefit. This is the, all of the, you know, we couldn't fit all the logos on the slide, but the goal of this slide is to show the breadth and depth of the support. So there's an entire ecosystem out there, whether you're one of the seven county conservation boards that sponsored the study for $5,000, whether you're a city like City of Jefferson, whether you're a bike club, like my bike club gave $500 towards this study. So there is a breadth and depth to this in terms of the support and just that collective impact of all of the entire ecosystem, or what I like to call the big bike family, standing up together and saying, this is an important project. This has significance. It's part of the story of who we are as a state. And in fact, I'll talk about this in just a moment. But it does inform how we market the state internationally in partnership with IEDA. So it's about how we make Iowa the best place it can be to live, work and play. This is just a note on sources in addition to that survey, federally sourced data. So this is also an improvement over the original study, which relied very heavily on trail counters, which I would characterize as anecdotal. You're capturing data from one trail in one place on one day. Not all of the folks who ride road, who ride gravel. I mean, there's just so much more trails and the prevalence about recreation has grown exponentially. So we wanted to capture this in a much more holistic sense. The total number, so that 364.9 million for that 2012 study, this is that number apples to apples comparison, 1.4 billion. And there's, you know, some inflation accounted for here, of course. There's been some inflation, but this has been adjusted for that. So it is 1.4 billion statewide. So we are the world capital of trails. We're home to 900,000 people who ride a bike. That's one in three Iowans who will ride a bike in the course of a year. We have localized data for Story County as well. Cycling is a top 50 industry in Iowa, so we went to the trouble of breaking down by industry, every single industry of the top 50, and it ranks within the top 50 as a result of the study. That's that world capital of trails moniker that we're using to market Iowa, not only nationally, but internationally in partnership with IEDA, to bring trade associations here, to bring conventions here, to bring events to Iowa that produces economic development and tourism. You know, there's over 2,000 multi-use trails across the entire state. There's nowhere else that we know of that has more multi-use trails than Iowa. So we should be leaning into that strength and saying, we are the world capital of trails. And that's according to the Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation, which by the way, also sponsored the study for $5,000. 21,000 jobs supported. You can move past this. 13 million in terms of tourism supported. Move forward. By the way, that 1.4 billion does not, this is not cumulative in the sense that like that 1.4 billion doesn't add the 13 million from tourism in addition to these other numbers. These are all separate. And so we feel that 1.4 billion is highly conservative and credible for that reason. You might say, well, that's a very big number. It actually stands on its own merit. Health impacts of cycling. This is an extension of the original study. We did look at health impacts. So we looked at a variety of cancers, but this thing is something that is an addition that was a huge headline grabber for the news that we've generated so far around the study, which by the way, is now over $50 million worth of earned media on this study in terms of a national grade audience. When we originally announced the study back in, the results back in January, you know, we got national news on this thing. And so 49% less likely to have poor mental health if you're an active cyclist. So that's if you bike three to five times or more per week. And that's according to census data. And so the fact that mental health has advanced by, you know, we just talked about mental health and proclamation here in NAMI Iowa is a great organization. And actually, we partnered with them, the state organization, NAMI Iowa, to look at some of the mental health things. That's 5,400 fewer Iowans experiencing poor mental health because of the cycling and trails that we have here. And so what I like to point out here is this is a very cost-effective investment in mental health cycling and trails for community building. Cyclists, cycling decreases breast cancer by 28%. And kind of clip through these. I'll go through these rapidly. 9,000 fewer Iowans with obesity. 77% less likely to have colorectal cancer. And then we did a series of case studies, and we included the Green County, City of Jefferson was one of our, you know, prime case studies. We wanted to demonstrate, you know, that anywhere in Iowa, this impact is happening. Of course, it's scaled, right? It's not, the impact that's happening in the Domen- Moynette Metro is not the same that's happening in City of Jefferson, but the impact is there. It's undeniable. And so it's that profound story that we want to tell with a unified voice, and that's the purpose of this study. Bike safety, just a quick note on that. You know, our bread and butter as an organization has been advancing bike safety in the Capitol. And so we did that first last year by signing into law with the governor's support, Crosswalk Protections Bill, which levels set protections for pedestrians regardless of your form of transportation. Previously, if you were on foot, you were protected. Cars had to yield to you. And then there was a patchwork depending on protections for other forms of transportation. This law levels set that and closed that gap in the loop, that loophole in the code, so that if you were on a stroller, if you were on a scooter, if you're being in a wheelchair, if you were on a bike or any other mobility device, now you are protected. Cars have to yield to you. And in fact, there were incidents of not only cyclists, but strollers being hit in crosswalks, and no charges could be filed. We fixed that problem. Forward. And then we were not done yet. Just this year, we signed a monumental bill. And in fact, I think this is the biggest accomplishment of our organization's 21-year history. We signed into law hands-free, which means that you have to use Bluetooth while driving, banning electronic devices while driving, operating motor vehicle. That's a win, of course, for cyclists, but also for every Iowan, because everyone is affected by the safety on our roadways, making Iowa the 31st state to have a hands-free law on the books. So we're making strides in increasing public safety. And I think the connection here that I like to lay out is that, you know, it's important for us to make Iowa the best place it can be to live, work and play. And so if safety really has to come first, it needs to be a safe place to live, work and play if we're going to attract talent, attract business, make it a great place for everybody. Partnership opportunities. I'll go very quickly through this. We have a Safe Routes to School program. We have a full-time staff member dedicated. It's a longtime, our flagship program, the DOT. We've done that for 17 years. We'd love to see some more schools signed up for our Walk Bike Roll Day that happens tomorrow. We've got 110 signed up so far. It's a voluntary program, but it's 100% paid for by the DOT and us, and so we'd like to offer that up. And if anyone wants to partner on that, we'd be happy to do that in the future, no? Bike to Work Week's happening, you know, it's Bike Month as well in the month of May. You know, the average commuter, I'll point out, spends the most on bicycling, so the more we can incentivize bike commuting, the better. So retrofitting our network, not only for recreation, but for commuting, means that, you know, communities and counties can get a bigger slice of the pie as far as what's the potential for the economics of this. And then the full study's available there. And then I'll just quickly go through the localized results for you, Story County results here. 42 million total economic impact in Story County specifically. Go ahead and move forward. Here's this broken up, but it's always retail is the number one industry. That's restaurants. That's pretty obvious, right? Any questions? Hopefully, I got through that in a reasonable amount of time.
Lot of information.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Was the, was the study also going to be on Story County Conservation's website?
Great question. Yeah, we could certainly work with them to do that. I presented them here in the next week or so. I think it might be next week that I present to them. So I could make that recommendation. That's a great idea, that we could have it linked on conservation websites as well, so that folks can have access to that. And certainly, we are now going into phase two of this, where we're going to be providing all 99 counties with an additional grant from the DOT for 25,000 from the Federal Highway Transportation Administration to get all 99 counties their individual county results. So this is going to be, you know, y'all were actually one of the first counties to get that as part of the original study. There's only Potawatomi, you, and I think it was Dallas that got those first up, just because there was a tangible need for grant applications that were due. So we worked with Mike directly on that and Ryan, who fantastic partners. I just want to say thank you for their leadership and stepping up. So that enabled us to then pitch that to say, could we do this for all 99 counties? So that's the next phase of this thing. And I'll be sending a follow-up with the localized results. I have a whole report for you, and I'll send that as a follow-up today.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you for having me. Can I get a quick photo?
Yeah.
We'll go on to agency reports now. And Mid-Iowa Community Action Annual Report, Robin Belden. Okay.
Hello, good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Good morning. Yes, we can.
Okay, great. All right, thanks for having me. So here to talk a little bit about MICA, Mid-Iowa Community Action, specifically our Story County Services. And just as a very brief overview or reminder, depending on if you've heard this spiel before, or if you're new to it, community action agencies are something that exist across the entire country. It's been something that's been around since the War on Poverty back in the 60s and the LBJ times. And there are thousands of agencies across the country. 16 of them exist in Iowa. And so, and are separated by regions. So Mid-Iowa Community Action covers five counties in the central Iowa region. We cover Story, Marshall, Tama, Hardin and Powashie counties. And then we have a handful of services that extend outside of those five core counties. Story County is one of our largest insofar as numbers of individuals assisted and enrolled in our programs just due to the population center that exists there in your county. And we have quite a large variety of services that we provide. And so you'll note in the report that there are things from long-term programs that are around youth development and education, where there's, you know, multiple days of attending across multiple years. And then there are very short-term programs, like emergency food assistance and energy assistance and things like that. So I did want to point out a couple of the kind of most significant pieces for what we're seeing over the last year. I will point out that the window of time that the data was pooled for this is July 1st of 2024 through March 31st of this year. So it's not a particular fiscal year or program year necessarily, but just the window of time that made the most sense for the data for us to pool for you guys. But in comparison to last year, looking at our emergency food pantry, we served in that same window of time or assisted 500 more unique individuals or unduplicated individuals, if you will, and 244 more unique households. This is a number that we've continued to see increase over the last couple of years. In the fall of 2023, we crossed 400 families in one month that had utilized the food pantry and rescue food services. And then that same month, one year later in 2024, we crossed 500. So we went from steadily assisting between 250 and 300 families month to month for several years to a sudden and sharp increase in unprecedented numbers over the last couple of years. Reasons for that, we think, are a combination of factors. Some of it is changes in eligibility for certain programs such as WIC and SNAP, and some of it is cost of food increasing, and some of it is other costs increasing like rent and so forth, causing the affordability of food to be more difficult on folks. So a lot more usage of our pantry and much increase in need of the food. Fortunately, last year, we were able to launch our mobile pantry. We already had deliveries available. So for folks who were homebound or did not have consistent or reliable transportation or, you know, medical needs or whatever the case may be, we already had in place the option to deliver food to the home. But providing a mobile pantry gives the ability for that kind of autonomy to choose the food that one wants. And we also bring along other resources and information and sometimes have staff from other programs that can help enroll in other programs and so forth. So you get a little bit more with the mobile pantry than you would with a delivery. And we had an AmeriCorps member that came and worked with us to launch that last summer. This year, we were able to secure a Home ARP grant to actually bring on staff and have kind of more of a full capacity to do this again this summer across the county. The hope is that we will hit a lot of the smaller rural communities. Last year, I think we were able to go to Maxwell and Collins Colo. And then we hit a couple of the graduate student housing areas of the university. And so hopefully, we'll be able to do something similar. We ended up with our data that we pulled with that last year had, I believe it was 66% of the people had never used our pantry before or didn't know that we existed. And so the mobile pantry ended up exposing them to a service that they needed, but didn't, weren't aware that was available or didn't realize that they had eligibility to utilize it or whatever the case may be. So hoping to reach a lot of families this summer as well, doing the same thing with the mobile pantry. The second and final piece that I wanted to make sure to kind of mention or point out is with our energy assistance. So some of you may know of this as LIHEEP, the Low Energy Home or Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program. And there's kind of two pieces to LIHEEP. There's the regular LIHEEP season, which is kind of an income-qualified program, where you get a one-time payment to supplement high costs of energy in the winter months. But then there is also the kind of crisis or emergency side of energy assistance to prevent disconnection or to reconnect when there's been a disconnection. This can also include, in the summer months, air conditioning services or fans for the high hot months. And it can also include like bills of liquid propane for folks who utilize that source of energy. Last year, when I submitted this report for this, this meeting, we had had about 158 crisis applications that had been approved. This year, we've already crossed 500. That is nearly four times as many people that are finding themselves in circumstances in which they are about to have an imminent disconnection or are already disconnected from their energy source or have run out of propane or whatever the case may be. Again, a variety of reasons that we suspect causing this, from other costs rising, so this cost is going on the back burner. There's also the piece of being protected. There's also the piece of being protected under the moratorium and where you can't get disconnected over the winter months. Some folks choose to put that bill on the back burner, knowing that it's kind of safe. But then they come up across, you know, $2,000, $3,000 bill come April and May. And so then they end up kind of hitting a snag there and not knowing where to turn. So both of those programs, we are just seeing kind of unprecedented numbers continuing to increase and the need continuing to increase. And as always, the funding not increasing. So there's lots of creativity that we're working with right now to to try to meet the needs of families, such as with the food pantry, seeking out more, you know, donations and community support. And with energy assistance, we are fortunate that a lot of our local municipalities, including City of Ames, have contribution programs where they have folks that give money for us to be able to to help folks with those crisis funds when needed. And so that's been very beneficial and helpful for for those that we serve. So that's all I wanted to present and share. Are there any questions or thoughts about what I shared or any additional piece of the report that I didn't necessarily review if there are any questions or clarity needed?
Robin. Yes, thank you, Supervisor American. Robin, my one question is, I've heard at the federal level, there's been discussion of eliminating or significantly reducing the LIHEAP program. Have you, are you hearing any more changes to that or is that still discussion ongoing?
That is still discussion ongoing. It is, as of this point, the President Trump has released his skinny budget and it is on his wish list that LIHEAP be zeroed out. I don't know if you guys are aware, but a couple months ago, the entire LIHEAP department at the federal level were let go. Unexpectedly couldn't get into their offices one morning. And so we think we kind of suspected that that was coming, that the the zeroing out of the budget was coming. But we are kind of holding out hope and crossing our fingers because things have to get congressional approval. And there has historically been strong bipartisan support for LIHEAP. But we are realistic and expect that there very well may be a significant cut to the program or it may look very different than it has in in former years. But we're hopeful that it still exists in some format. But yes, the the hope of the president is that it is no longer in existence come FY '26.
And the same with Head Start programs, early childhood programs. Also, you're still hearing that?
Yes. So kind of the difference between, so LIHEAP, Iowa does not have a state program. So all of our LIHEAP programming is entirely federal. For Head Start and early Head Start, we have had both federal and state funding. The state serving is kind of wraparound support to be able to provide additional slots for children, to be able to provide longer school days for to accommodate like working parents or parents that are in school. One of the recent pieces of legislation at the state level moved money that we used to use for the some of that wraparound extended school day services to another program on the wish list of Governor Reynolds. And so we've already had tremendous upheaval in our ECP Early Childhood Programs Department because of that. And then again, yes, at the federal level, the wish of the president is to zero out that program and for it to no longer exist next year.
Are there any other programs that you're providing now that you're concerned about federal funding for?
Yes. So weatherization is another one. And in in some states, it's tied really closely to LIHEAP. And in Iowa, it is as well. It's technically two different departments, but to be eligible for weatherization in Iowa, you have to be approved for LIHEAP. And so that's kind of how that's connected. It's a much smaller program, and so it seems to not be mentioned directly as frequently in the conversations. But our understanding is that with the cut of LIHEAP, that the president's intention is that weatherization would go as well. And then CSBG, the Community Services Block Grant, is the other big one. And even though LIHEAP and Head Start are huge and would be extremely impactful to community action, CSBG is the foundation on which we can exist at all. It covers a lot of the like admin and indirect costs and things that direct funding and direct programming costs do not cover. So CSBG is the one that is probably the the biggest threat to to what we do. But and that one is also on the president's list for complete elimination.
I I I just don't even. I just don't even have words.
All the wonderful services you've been providing, all this time that people depend on, and to hear that they're just not valued is very sad.
Yes.
We will be thinking of you and if there's anything that we can do to help bring up any, you know, bring up any points that need to be considered, let us know.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much for that. We, you know, we've been telling everyone, whether it's people who use our services that are enrolled or members of the public or or elected officials to, you know, speak out and say things, whether it's putting stuff on your social media, whether it's writing letters to congresspeople, like, you know, anything at all, any of that kind of advocacy is very helpful to us right now. And we kind of have an advocacy team put together at MICA, talking directly to both state level and federal level legislators, including our executive director, went to DC herself and sat in the offices of of Feenstra and Grassley and Ernst and so forth. And so, you know, we're doing everything we can on our end. And we've been saying, you know, we were we were created in a time of struggle and we were built for this and we're really good at pivoting and adjusting when we need to. And so, you know, even if everything under the sun gets cut, at the end of the day, we, you know, still have our community contributions and our fantastic food pantries that are like literally supported by by community. And so we can still exist. We just will probably probably look a lot different. And and we'll do everything we can to keep as much as we can and continue assisting as many people as we can. But but thank you. And thank you for your time for letting me speak today.
Thank you very much for all the information.
Sure.
Thanks, Robin.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the City of Roland ARPA Annual Report, Melissa Mattingly and Dalton Johnston. Good morning. Give us some good news, please.
Morning.
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 So first of all, we'd like to thank you guys for giving us this opportunity. I know it's been an interesting process, but we're getting through it. On the sewer side of it, we're just about complete. We're just wrapping up a few things, mostly just restoring ground, that type of thing. So we're probably by the end of the month, I think that should be wrapped up. And we'll do a count with your guys' staff to figure out where we're at financially on that. And we have a few little things we can do if we do have money left over, and we can wrap up pretty quickly. On the water side of it, the water main loopings. Hopefully, within the next week, week and a half, we will be a third of the way done with the actual installation of projects. So it's moving along pretty well. Everything else is lined up and ready to go for them guys to get the ground running. You guys have any questions for us?
No concerns about completion?
Nope. Nope. Everything's fucking away, so.
Do you think you're going to have a little bit of money left that you would want to try to repurpose within that general purpose area?
Yeah, we might, but I doubt it'd be a whole lot.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Yeah. Anything else?
Nothing else. Good work. Thank you for all you're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for being here.
Next, we have City of Zering ARPA Report, Amy Womoldorf. Did I get the name right? Pretty close. I'm surprised. Okay. Good morning, Amy.
Morning. Start off, I guess, thanks. We want to thank you. This is very huge help to the city. Our project's completed. It's been completed since July of '23. The water main looping in town. It went well. It was before my time with the city. But it was something the city needed very badly. Great.
Were you able to use all the funds?
Yes.
Super. Okay, a win for Zering.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Any questions, anybody?
No.
Good.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Again, I think you've been here once, right?
Yeah, right after I started.
Yeah.
Mayor brought me.
Yeah. Good to see you.
Okay, next we have Project Iowa ARPA Annual Report, Gabby Cox.
Good morning. How are you guys doing?
Fine. How are you?
Doing well. So I'm Gabby Cox, Director of Programs with Project Iowa. And our project is moving right along, working with under and unemployed Iowans and specifically targeting folks in Ames who need access to to help in finding better employment. Robin spoke earlier about the increase of groceries, rent. You know, a lot of a lot of situations people find themselves in needing needing better wages or, you know, looking for working less jobs and one job that can keep them financially stable. So that's increased our applicants, not only with within Story County, but also surrounding areas as well. And, you know, our what we're working on even more is just more connections with employers. Because they're with layoffs and things like that, that's a little challenging. And on average, it takes a job seeker about three months to secure a job from from starting to search, especially, you know, going through the program. On average, it's about how long it takes. So still working with graduates. We also had a handful of some immigrants and refugees who maybe were not fluent enough to to go through the program, but we could still do a lot of one-on-one work with them and help connect them to employment. So that's also been a win as well.
Questions? Yeah. Thanks, Amy. This is Latifa Faisal. Just wondering, so how many people have been served in Story County?
In Story County, through the program, we've had 13. And then some of the those that we still served that did not go through the full program, because language barrier usually. It's like an additional seven or eight. So I would say in total about 25.
So the the 13 are are graduates?
Correct.
Or?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have zip codes for where those individuals live? Like, are they all Ames-based?
Not all Ames. I'd have to look up and and see exactly which zip codes, but not all of them are from Ames. I do. I do know that.
It would be good to see that information if you could.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Supervisor Hiddens, did you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you.
I have another one, if that's okay. So one of the one of the things that was so exciting about your program when it was proposed for ARPA funding was that it works directly with people who are either unhoused or on the verge of homelessness and who are really struggling with employment skills, soft skills, all those, you know, wraparound assistance was was talked about. And so I'm just wondering if there was any work done with the Bridge Home or providers in Story County who help people who are homeless or on the verge of homelessness. I know there was a real struggle to find participants for a while. But it seems like that that has should have moved on.
Yeah. So we we've had some meetings and kind of gatherings in in Ames specifically with some of our partners through Amos who have, you know, boots-on-the-ground connections with, you know, local providers or even just within their churches and communities and identifying like, you know, people who are struggling and need that support. And so I'd say, you know, it's earlier in or later in 2024, making a few trips up there to meet specifically with people who, you know, had some barriers and needed immediate help. And, you know, that's the first step with the wraparound supports is to, you know, identify, okay, you know, the the biggest the biggest hurdle to to go over right now is to make sure your bills are getting paid by, you know, in a few weeks. Let's tackle that first and doing those pre those steps like beforehand to then help them be in a position where they can actually look for a job and, you know, focus on building a resume and and, you know, getting to where they need to go. So some of our connections did help with that. And so we're still just kind of managing how often we're going up there and and relying on our partners to also help share that information with us, you know, when we, when it's, you know, best for us to to intervene.
So how often are you coming up here?
I would say about once a quarter. It's pretty.
Once a quarter?
Mm-hmm.
What is it? I'm sorry. So what does it look like when you're working not? And I'm not, I'm saying you, but as a larger you. I don't, I don't want this to seem like an attack.
Yeah.
But what does it look like when the organization is helping someone?
It looks like we, so we meet one-on-one with them. And we have, you know, a series of questions and ways to build a relationship to understand, you know, what's the immediate need? What and how can how can we help you navigate getting that assistance? Some people just don't have access to internet, don't have access to technology to even help initiate them, you know, finding what they need in that moment. And so our connection to resources, our ability to help them just kind of walk through the process of how to fill out a form to get this type of assistance, where to go to talk to someone about, you know, this issue you're experiencing. Although some of those needs are outside of the scope of what we do, we can provide the wraparound support to help them navigate and get in connection. So sometimes it's helping them connect to internet, have the technology to help them find what they need, talking through, you know, kind of assessing, you know, what's the first thing, first thing you should work on right now and how we can help you and and just taking those steps until they're fully ready to to find employment. And those things can happen at the same time. So, you know, we pride ourselves on being individualized in that way to make sure it's collaborative and, you know, people who need immediate help, you know, we can, we can help them navigate that.
So you've mentioned people not having access to internet and helping them get that. How did you do that?
So for some for some folks who are wanting to engage in the program, you know, we can offer them, you know, loan them out a laptop, also help them with mobile hotspots so that they have internet to engage in the classes virtually and do, you know, their own job search. Or if there's folks who like don't feel comfortable using technology and and don't know how to navigate the internet, you know, everything about employment is web-based at this point. We can take it up there and sit one-on-one with them and do it. We've, we've done that before, too.
So you have helped Story County residents to to get access to internet. You've loaned them laptops or hotspots?
Yep.
Okay. How many, you said you've served 13. 13 have graduated from your program. How many more do you anticipate that you will, you will be able to serve through the remain, with the remainder of the ARPA funds and remainder of the grant period?
Um, I would say at least, you know, 20 more. Like I said, we just, we just started a cohort yesterday and had a few people starting in there. So I think we've got through 2026. And just anticipating what, you know, in relation to our increase in applicants and people needing services, I, that's what I would see.
So if you're only coming up here once a quarter, how are people getting the services?
So the programming that we offer is, we, we do things virtually. So we have people, we've talked to the libraries and other community partners who we present to them what we do and then they make referrals. So there are plenty of referrals that get sent our way with people who either will commute and come to us or we work with them virtually in the classes and that's how they do one-on-one coaching. And usually those are folks who are not, you know, having such serious barriers to begin with. There's plenty that, you know, they, they're able to, to work through that stuff on their own.
So you said you started a cohort yesterday. How many people are from Story County in that cohort?
I think we might have two.
Looks like Lisa has a question.
So, so when you say you're going to serve 20 more, you're not just talking Story County?
Oh, for Story County, yeah. Yeah. I mean, for every cohort, you know, there is a, most of the percentage is, is Hope County or Dallas. I would say beyond Story County, yes, 20. We, we have other people in the, in the cohorts, too.
Lisa, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I do have a couple of questions. So you mentioned that you're here, it's been kind of spoken once a quarter. So if you're meeting with them virtually, how often are you doing that? And then what's your success rate in not only finding it, folks finding a job, but also sustaining that position with the ones that you've worked with, the 13 so far?
Yeah, so with the graduates, we've got about a 75% employment rate with them. And then, and that's what we have so far. We have a couple of graduates from February and March who we're still working with. They have, they're still interviewing and looking for employment. So they, they haven't been included in that. And we, we reach out, I would say about every few months. We stay in contact with them at least for a year. You know, it just kind of depends on, you know, who decides to reach back out. We, we reach out through text, you know, phone calls to check on them, invite them to, to set up meetings if they're having any issues with their employment or some people might start a job and want to, maybe it's not a good fit or for whatever reason. But as far as we know, everyone that's got unemployment has stayed in their jobs. For those that have, you know, responded or shared with us kind of how things are going. So at that rate, that's, and we find that.
So do you provide any job coaching then for once they get, get to the job if that's needed?
Absolutely. Yep.
And do you follow up with employers or are you just taking people's word for it?
Um, for the most part, it's, it's self-report. With employers, it's, it's kind of tricky to get that type of verification. And if it's an employer that we know and have a relationship with, we could. But it's, you know, we're, we're working with them along the whole process. You know, let's find the job, the application, helping them with that. You know, if they get a response to, to interview, we help them through. So, you know, their, their self-report on it is pretty credible in that way. We, we don't have an official process of, you know.
I, I wish you would. I think it's, you know, if somebody's got a job and they're struggling in it, they may not tell you, but if you know that, you may be able to work with that employer, find out what the problems are. You might be able to keep somebody in a job and help them succeed. That's my sense.
Yeah, for sure. Of course.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now go on to item nine, consideration of minutes, the April 29th minutes.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Heddins, seconded by Faisal. Heddins?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Minutes are approved. Next, we have consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Faisal?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved. Next, we'll go to consideration of claims.
I move approval of claims as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve claims. Heddins?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Claims are approved. We have no public hearing items. So we will go on.
I move approval of consent agenda as presented.
Consent, I'm sorry.
Second.
It's the C's that gets me. I thought we just did it. Okay. Moved and seconded. Faisal?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent is now approved. So no public hearing items. We will go on to additional items. We have Alyssa Wignall and Lisa Markley with us to talk about a revised cell phone policy.
Morning.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Um, so yes, you do see a revised cell phone policy consideration on the agenda. With our implementation of our new HRS and soft and payroll system, we were updating all the stipends and different things and looking at the policy and different things and noticed we hadn't, this policy has not been looked bad since 2012. A lot of, a lot of things have changed in the world of cell phones. Previously, our, our current policy has a separate cellphone and data allowance. If you, if you have a cellphone, most of, you know, that, that now it's a, it's kind of a bundle that you get. They don't, they used to have, you get your cell service and then you get a different data package and, you know, it'd be $29.99 extra. So that's kind of the thought. So we did go through and kind of revise a few things. We removed, I'll just go through and remove a few things. There was a piece in our current policy that said a department head or elected official can require an employee to maintain it through a specific provider. I'm not aware that that's being used and, and I don't know why we would say you have to go with Verizon or U Cellular or T-Mobile. So we did remove that and just say that they can, you know, the employee, if they have their personal cellphone and you're getting an allowance, they can, they have the contract or agreement or whatever with their provider. It's up to the employee. Same with the type of phone. It, it's not, it's not a county-owned cellphone. So really, it doesn't matter as long as it, they can take calls and check their emails. I think that is sufficient. So we did revise it to just have one single stipend. The amount is $40. That seems to be pretty standard across different organizations. It's anywhere from $30 to $40 is what their cellphone stipends are. 15 years ago, it probably would have cost $70 or $80. Now we're looking, a lot of them are $40 to $50 is what their base plan is. We did put in here, they cannot, and it's in our current policy, can't be, the stipend can't be more than actual expenses. And we did outline in the new policy kind of what those actual expenses mean. Base plan plus taxes and you can include your, what is it, federal excise or whatever, all those other fees that they tack on. We did put in the new policy that it does not include device payments. We've never included that in the stipend amounts. That was a separate piece in our old policy. We used to give them up to $50 every two years if they purchase a new phone. We are recommending that that is just removed from the plan. The, the employee owns the cellphone, the county does not. So it's their equipment. We don't pay for insurance. We don't pay for, or included in the amount eligible for an allowance. Insurance shouldn't be included and neither should other. You can get streaming packages through your cellphone company. You can get cloud storage through all, I mean, there's just so many more things now that you can purchase through with a cellphone plan or whatever than you could have back in 2012 when we did this revision. So I don't know if the Board has any questions. Lisa has annual figures of, of what the county spends for stipends. I don't know if we know what we spend for cellphone on an annual basis. I will say that the county has purchased some county-owned cellphones for employees recently and those monthly costs range, some departments, they're as low as, I think, like $27 a month for a cellphone. And then.
There's like 41.
41 or 51. I think like $51 or $52 is kind of the cap on what we're seeing through the claims process of what they're kind of, those, those have gone down tremendously, too. I think, gosh, 12, 13 years ago, it was, you could barely get a county-owned one for $80 or $90 a month. So, so things have changed. So we felt like it was time to come forward with a revised policy.
So you really have two options in here. One of them is an allowance and you just use it. The other one is under personal cellular phones and it says incidental use, reimbursement would be a dollar per use. So obviously incidental means not very often. We're not going to have somebody who's doing 50 calls a month and charging us $50 or $100.
And that portion of the policy has always been real, we've hardly paid anything out on that. It's mainly been used, I think, for elections. When, when we have our employees, our staff, whatever, out in the road and they call back to the office, they can re, get reimbursed a dollar a call. It's, it's hardly ever been used. We talked about taking it out. We can certainly take it out. I don't think that, I think things have progressed far enough that nobody even really thinks about doing that. But, yeah.
I, I would hate to take it out. I think, I think there are a lot of people who, if they need to use their personal cellphone for work matters, but they're, they don't usually use their phone for any of that, that there should be some sort of recognition like and reimbursement for that.
I agree.
And, and a long time ago, we used to go over, I mean, there were days you would go over your minutes and you'd have separate charges or you'd go over the, the data. Now, most of them have, I mean, most of it's unlimited anymore. So things have changed quite a bit.
Yeah, and, and obviously the allowance is taxable. Whereas that dollar reimbursement randomly is just a claim.
Okay.
Gotcha. Supervisor Heddins, did you have any questions?
Uh, no, Lisa just answered my questions, so I'm good with that. I would, though, if you're ready for a motion, make a motion that we consider the revised cellphone policy and send it out for seven-day review.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to send out the proposal for seven, seven-day review. Heddins?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye.
Thank you, Merkin. Thanks for your work on it.
Thank you very much. Like a, a good, it's overdue, good cleanup. Okay, so now we have LeAnn Harder on the discussion and consideration of resolution for voluntary annexing of the Borgmeyer and other properties. Good morning, LeAnn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Bryce. This item before you is an annexation to the city of Ames on the screen. Now are in green and some hatched areas in green are the properties that do comprise the annexation, generally located north of the existing city limits. The existing city limits in this are colored gray. I have another slide that will show them better coming. But it's generally south of Ames Golf and Country Club, extending east over to Hyde Avenue to capture some of the land that was not previously annexed. There are, yep.
Can I ask a question right now? I see those three properties on 190th are included, even though they're not adjacent? Because the irons.
Oh, that is actually, I meant to bring my thing to zoom in.
Oh, I see. That's an enlargement.
Enlargement of the right-of-way along Stang Road.
Okay. I just looked at it. I thought, what are those doing there? And I didn't see the lines. I'm sorry.
Nope, that's a good clarification. Thank you, Bryce. So this is a, what's, it's a voluntary annexation. So the first bullet point are the properties that have filed the petitions for, for annexation. Then along with that, there are properties that are islands or, or, or right-of-way within the boundaries of the annexation. So those are being brought in through an 80-20 annexation with 80% consenting property owners, which is that first section that comprises about 198.18 acres. The remainder is the 20% non-consenting. So that's a combination of properties on that previous slide that were hatched or right-of-way. There is a railroad right-of-way that is being brought in as well as some county right-of-way along Stang and GW Carver. If you want to go to the next slide, please. This is a better image than the annexation plat to show what this does look like. So the properties proposed to be annexed are in blue. And then blue and hatched area are the non-consenting, that 20% of the voluntary annexation. That long skinny piece going down to the right, from northwest to southeast, pardon me, my voice is going, is the old railroad, is the railroad right-of-way that is being brought in as well. So what this really will do is square up some boundaries for the city of Ames as well on the north. It is anticipate, in anticipation of development of the Borgmeyer properties, which would include the extension of Stang Avenue. But then, as I said, kind of shoring up some of their boundaries. Property is mostly surrounded by the city of Ames. You see that in the southwest and the east. Existing zoning in the county is majority A1 agricultural. There is one parcel that is AR agricultural residential. And all the properties are designated on our C2C Plan Future Land Use Map as urban expansion and natural resource areas. There is floodplain in the, in the property, so there, that's the natural resource area.
How does that impact the annexation, if at all?
Because the natural resource areas are floodplain primarily. It will fall under the city's floodplain regulations.
Thanks.
State Code, Chapter 3, in Section 368.7 governs annex, governs annexations. It does require that within 30 days from the consultation meeting, the Board of Supervisors take some form of action. If you do not take action, then you're basically approving it, too. That is why we're, before you today, the consultation meeting was held on April 17th regarding proposed annexation. Supervisor Merkin and I both attended and met with city of Ames staff. So your action today is, as the area is contiguous to existing city limits and does meet the requirements of the C2C Plan, as this area being appropriate for future development and future city limits, staff has purported the resolution that says you are in support of the annexation. So following your action today, if you do approve the resolution as worded, staff will forward that on to the city clerk for city of Ames on behalf of the Board. Are there any questions now that my voice is back?
I do not have any questions. Thank you, LeAnn.
Thank you.
I don't either.
I have just a couple. There was some issue on the, between the. There was some issue on the, um, between the, between the Borgmeyer property and the irons about that stand, about that road there. Was that cleared up?
Um, yes, our maps have been, our, the maps on Beacon have been modified to show that the right-of-way does exist. Um, it wasn't shown on the maps and, um, county engineer Darren Moon did not have any additional concerns.
Okay. And do you know if anybody's contacted us of the non-consenting landowners? Have you heard from any of them?
Yes, um, planning and development has not heard from anyone, no.
Hmm. Um,
I, I did fail to mention, I meant to add it to the, um, presentation. My apologies, I did not. Um, as this is within two miles, the, the city of Gilbert, the final action for the annexation will have to go to the city development board. So eventually, this will not become official until later this summer, early fall in September because that process is required by the state code.
Okay. And remind us what our authority is here in terms of if we did not approve this?
You really, you have the ability to, um, comment whether or not it is in conformance with the county's, um, future land use map and those comments can be shared with the city development board as well. And then they will take them into consideration.
Sometimes people think we have a veto.
Yeah, you do not.
And we do not. And I just wanted to clarify that. Okay. I have no other questions.
Uh, I would move approval of resolution 25-89.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. Any further discussion? If not, Faisal?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we will go on, I think. Let me double check. Okay, to department reports. Ann Erin Rewards with general assistance, good morning.
Good morning. I feel like I was just here.
You were.
It was February. I was telling Zach when we got here, I'm like, I think I just did this.
Time goes quickly.
Yeah, it sure does. Um, okay, so we had, so this quarter would be January, February and March. February was, um, a really slow month for us. We had only, um, it doesn't reflect it on here, but, uh, 80 applications, I think, um, which is, uh, I think it's mostly tax returns, believe it or not. Um, and people are, you know, try to sustain their landlords until they get those. Uh, did not affect our overall numbers. I mean, it's very similar to most quarters. So, um, we had 22 single households, 18 family, uh, 235 denials. And then, um, you can kind of see our assistance amounts down there. The miscellaneous, uh, is primarily burials, uh, because those are 2,075 apiece. So that's, we had a big, I think it was 10,000, um, one month, so. Um, okay, we did have an increase of $26,000 roughly in requests for rent that quarter. Um, we also began our search for a full-time administrative assistant during that time. Um, and to jump ahead, she will be starting May, May 19th.
Yay.
So, yeah, it's very timely for us and, and a big help. So, um, Zach will talk a little bit more about that with his report, but he's pretty excited. Um, so I have continued kind of my research on our, our rules, um, looking at other counties and what they do. Um, we were able to locate, actually, last year, I think we had a GA retreat and, um, at that time, they had gathered information from general assistance directors around the whole state. I'd kind of forgotten about it because it was a beast of a spreadsheet. I mean, it was really hard to interpret and that kind of thing. So I had our intern, um, fix that for me, basically. She, um, made that a lot more readable with the counties that are contiguous to us on one. And then on the other report, the counties that are similar in size, population-wise. So it's, um, much easier to interpret. And so my next steps are, um, kind of cross-checking it with our manual to see how much flexibility we have, um, in the areas that we'd like to propose making changes to, I guess. And, um, the ones that kind of stand out where we aren't very compatible to other counties are the loss of a job in the last 90 days, um, income limits and al- also our length of residency. Um, so there's quite a variation there. Um, my, you know, statistics and general statistics are so inconsistent. Um, they're, they're, there's, they just waver a little bit either direction at any given time. So it's kind of, I don't know, it's, it's deflating to try to figure out. Um, because I, I was hoping there'd be more there, but I'm still doing it. Um, and we'll see. Um, I've also continued my involvement on, um, the Story County Inter-Agency Collaboration Council, which if you went to, um, a couple of the, um, public forums or the town hall meetings that city of Ames and Story County had in regards to homelessness, um, we talked about our committee there and kind of, um, what we had started to do. Um, we did have a few months in here. I think our last meeting was February. And then we had a weather incident in March and then didn't get together in April again. So we do have a meeting tomorrow.
Oh, good.
Um, and so that's, we're going to review that report from Dr. Flowers, see where our committee maybe could fit into that three-year plan. Um, and then we'll go from there. So. Any questions or anything?
Um, I don't have any either.
I, I don't.
Supervisor Hiddens? Look like it. Okay.
All right.
Thank you very-
Thank you.
And now we will hear from Veterans Affairs with Zach Skelton. Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, so, proper report from Veterans Affairs. This past quarter, we've been focusing on process and procedures. Uh, you can see, I've got a list on the summary here that, uh, PIV card training, that's completed, so I can access the VA's online system, which before I had to use, uh, Aaron's access to be able to see stuff. So that has made things a lot more efficient. Um, also have accreditation with the VFW, uh, the DAV, and I'm just waiting on the American Legion to come through and we'll have the same access throughout the office. Uh, Aaron and I completed the state training that they held in April. Uh, and then planning and coordination for a new event that didn't exist before. We're trying to start that up for June. I'm just waiting on the last little logistics resource for being able to get food for that. And then we're looking at possibly June 14th to have an event at the City Church of Ames. Uh, more to follow on that when it's completely, all the, all the pieces are there. Uh, as Aaron mentioned, we hired an admin assistant, uh, shared with the general assistants. She starts on May 19th. This, this is something that we're, uh, very excited about. And as, uh, we go through the report, I'll mention some of the things that she is going to be doing. Uh, re- and then also reviewed office procedures so that we have better compliance with HIPAA that is, uh, ensuring that our keys have positive control. Uh, only certain people have access to them. The drawers that have HIPAA are labeled as such. Uh, just made sure that all that stuff was aligned. And then last weekend, we had a ruck march that was eight miles. Aaron participated in it. I was unfortunately gone on military leave, uh, that we did jointly with the ISU Military Affiliated Students. Uh, and we were able to raise some money for a family that we've been trying to get, funds so that they could have a headstone placed at the Story Memorial Gardens in a previously unmarked grave. As far as assistance, we provided just 75 cents, less than $2,500 this past quarter. Uh, that is three for rent and three for utility, which is, uh, the same number of people that we were able to assist in the previous quarter. For outreach, uh, Aaron and I participated in the ISU Claims Clinic. It's a new event that they set up again with the ISU Military Affiliated Students. Uh, we were at the Iowa State Campus and we met collectively with 12 people during the day that we were at the Memorial Union. Uh, I've started attending the Seniors in Story event. Unfortunately, we weren't able to grab a booth at the Senior Expo, but we've made those connections so that next year we'll be able to be in on them. Uh, River Valley Veterans Network is hosted from Iowa Workforce Development. And I've brought in a new client each time we've gone to that, so that's been a good event. There's an organization, Guitars for Vets, that exists out there and I've been able to establish contacts with that. So that's something that's kind of in future planning. And then Aaron, um, gave a speech at the Long Term Care Annual Conference at the beginning of April, um, for social workers to be able to understand better what we do. As far as statistics, uh, in the report I have, I have more detailed breakdown number, but we have 51.6 veterans per month that we, uh, see between Aaron and myself. And it has been a steady number throughout compared to last quarter, which means that we've maintained being quite busy. Uh, as far as our budget, we have $22,800 of money that's appropriated or that was appropriated and provided for services to veterans, which is 60%, 62% of those funds. Uh, we utilize 67% of our budget so far throughout this year. And then for the next steps, where are we going here? Uh, we wanted to increase the frequency of newsletters and information output and that is something that we're going to be utilizing that admin assistant to. Uh, where newsletters were going out quarterly, webpage was not updated very frequently. She is graduating soon here in the next week or so with a marketing degree and we plan to take full advantage of that. Uh, establish rotational outreach so that going further than outside of the office, do have to balance that though with, we are quite busy to begin with. Uh, and if we do too much outreach, we also end up with having too many people come in and we won't be able to give them the quality of service. And then also creating a contingency plan, uh, as a department with one full-time person, being myself and shared with GA, if I go on deployment or if I get hit by a bus, we don't really have somebody to fall in place. So working with the adjoining counties, uh, establishing procedures on who could fill in and how that would look and then putting that down onto paper, uh, is something that we're working on for the next quarter. Here at the net, we appreciate the continued support and I'll take any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions?
Oh, wow.
Statistics are really nice.
Oh, thank you.
You're doing a good job on this.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, um, we do not have any other reports. Um, do, um, does anyone have any upcoming agenda items?
I do not.
Okay, I do not either. Okay, now we'll go to public comment number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of the open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Um, anybody have any, uh, comments? Open public comment. Seeing no hands raised, I will close public comment number two. And, um, we'll discuss our liaison assignments, committee meetings and any other announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor Faisal, what do you have?
Um, this afternoon, I have a Story County reads meeting and then there is, um, a webinar. I'm attending, um, Americans for the Arts, just talking about some of the proposed cuts that are coming. Um, tomorrow morning, we have, uh, Public Service Recognition Breakfast and they have a Naco Justice and Public Safety Steering Committee meeting. Um, and Wednesday afternoon joint, um, meeting with Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, and then, uh, CCJ, oh, I just did something to my calendar, CCJ meeting, um, Wednesday night. Sorry, I don't know what I just did to my calendar. Um, Thursday, I'm meeting with someone, um, a couple of people from, um, still trying to figure out my calendar. I have a meeting Thursday.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, DEIB committee meeting Thursday afternoon. And then Friday, um, I am going with, um, a group to the Creative Places Exchange in Burlington.
Ah, okay. So, um, tomorrow morning, we have the, um, Public Service Recognition Breakfast, as you stated. If there's time, I'm going to, um, run up to Gilbert to, uh, participate in the Stop the Bleed training. Yeah, and joint planning and zoning and board supervisors meeting again on Wednesday afternoon. Thursday, I don't seem to have anything. Friday, did you have, there's a presentation?
What?
Um,
Oh.
Senator Ernst is going to be here, so.
Yeah, that's with Veterans Affairs.
Yes.
Yeah. I don't know if I'm going to be, I, I don't know that I'm-
I've got it on my calendar, so I can definitely do that.
Okay.
And, um, Monday, uh, I have a meeting in the morning at Mary Greeley about emergency medical services and conservation board in the evening. So that's what I have coming up. Any other announcements? Nope, then I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second, Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We're adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.